Good morning. This is Wednesday, November 8, 2023. We have a series of typical Wednesday agendas for council time, work sessions, executive sessions, so off we go. We start at 9:00 AM with the work session and please count on for sure being back by 1:00 PM if you wish to listen to the council time agenda. So 9:00 AM, it's the Comcast Cable Franchise Renewal Project. So Jim Demmon, do we turn it over to you or who's going to take over on this topic?
Yes, I'll take over. Thank you. I'm Jim Demmon, the Video Services Manager for the City of Vancouver. And in my role, I oversee the City County Cable Television Office and Clark Vancouver Television. We are currently in the process of negotiating two separate but nearly identical cable franchises for Clark County and the City of Vancouver. And just a reminder, these are non-exclusive cable television franchises, meaning any other company could come and seek a similar franchise with us. The cable franchise with Comcast expires on June 30, 2024. The workshop today will review the cable franchise's negotiation process and seek the county council's feedback on some of the key issues. After receiving feedback, staff will continue negotiations and bring a finalized cable franchise for the county council to consider in spring of 2024. Staff provided a briefing memo in your package which gives background information on the current cable television franchise, number of subscribers, amount of revenue brought in to the county, community outreach efforts, and the legal authority. So the franchise renewal process started in August 2020 with a letter from Comcast. The Cable TV office then set up a contract with CBG Communications. Go ahead, next slide. Then set up a contract with CBG Communications Incorporated for providing both negotiation support and creating what's called a cable needs ascertainment study. As set up in federal law, cable companies do need to address the cable-related needs of a community. In May 2021, during the pandemic, CBG Communications sent 4,000 mailed surveys asking questions regarding the cable system needs to a mix of both non-cable subscribers and cable subscribers. The addresses were randomly selected to ensure the survey was scientifically valid. After the mailer survey period closed, we opened up an online survey and received an additional 503,2 responses. CBG Communications also held focus groups with a variety of interested parties, including youths, seniors, neighborhoods, and arts and cultural advocates. CBG also visited PEG providers, and PEG stands for Public Educational and Government. And so we have two currently, Clark Vancouver Television, which is the government access provider, and TV etc. And TV etc. is the educational access provider. And they're a consortium of school districts, including Vancouver, Evergreen, and Battleground School Districts. They also met with subscribers of Comcast Business Services, which used to be called INET, to get their input as well. The needs report was completed in December of 2021, and negotiations began in August 2022 and have continued twice a month since then. And on the negotiation teams, there's myself, Stephen Archer with the County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Taylor Halvik with the City Attorney's Office, as well as representatives from CBG Communications. And we're meeting with representatives from Comcast. Okay, next slide. So here are some of the key priority issues we'd like to get some feedback from the council. First, everything being discussed today is part of a full negotiation, so some items could be subject to change. We conducted the needs assessment, as I mentioned, in the middle of the pandemic. One issue we heard from residents in unincorporated Clark County was a need for cable television in more rural areas of the county. Many households needed connectivity to work or go to school remotely. The current build-out requirements in the county franchises are quite frankly a little confusing. They include a diagram which never really worked as intended. In the new proposed language, mainly taken from a Clackamas County franchise which was recently approved, we are reducing the number of residences needed in an area where expansion is requested from 10 residences per quarter mile in aerial neighborhoods to five residences. And so aerial neighborhoods are those areas where there are poles and overhead cables. Comcast is still waiting to confirm the five residences number, so that number could change once we get done with negotiations. But it is going to be reduced from the 10 we currently have. In areas where there's underground requirements, it moves from 10 residences to eight residences per quarter mile. We also better outline cost sharing between Comcast and residences for any extensions needed that are over 125 feet from the cable plant. So a lot of homes, for example, in the rural areas might have long driveways, well over 125 feet. So we try to better spell out any cost sharing that would be done. I also want to note that Comcast, although it's not in the cable franchise, Comcast has been working with Clark County on applying for broadband grants to further expand their services in rural areas. Okay, for PEG channels, again, public, educational, and governmental channels negotiations, we had to deal with competing needs, the needs for more PEG viewing options versus Comcast's desire to capture more bandwidth for other services. Currently, we have six standard definition channels. And standard definition channels are like 23, 21, and three high-definition channels. So those are usually in the 300s. CVTV has two SD and standard def and high-def channels. So we have 21, 321, and then 23, 323. So that way viewers with HD televisions can watch the programming through HD. For TV etc., currently has the three standard definition channels, but only one HD channel. So for TV etc., we were able to negotiate two additional HD simulcast. So all three of their channels will be in HD as well. This would bring us to a total of five HD channels, two for CBTV and three for TV etc. However, in exchange, Comcast requested to discontinue the video-on-demand provisions in the existing franchise. So video-on-demand, you know, I think we get 15 hours of storage of video-on-demand. TV etc. currently uses it to store different programs, concerts, and things so people can go to it and utilize it. So we did follow up with TV etc., and they said that they have been utilizing, but they're willing to forego the video-on-demand if they get the HD channels. Because that's what's their priority in negotiations, we're getting all three of their channels in HD. We also offered up a discrete cable channel that CBTV uses mainly for training firefighters and paramedics. Prior to the pandemic, we would televise monthly trainings. Once the pandemic hit, the trainings went virtual, which is actually a better service than the cable TV coverage we were providing. And I have notified the Vancouver Fire Chief about this issue, so he's aware that that channel will likely be going away. As you know, we haven't had a local public access provider for several years. Fort Vancouver Community Television was the last public access provider we had. Currently on our public access channel, Cable 11, we are airing what's called the Community Area Network, also known as CAN. And this is a group of public access facilities in the Portland metro area. The access stations each share time on the CAN network for airing programming. Why we did that is because local Clark County and Vancouver access producers can submit programming to CAN and it will still air in Clark County. Based off the feedback we received from the public in the ascertainment study, we had proposed keeping CAN and seeking an additional HD channel simulcast of Channel 11 and having the option to replace the channel with a local public access provider if one ever again launched in Clark County. Comcast, though, has only agreed to keep Channel 11 in standard definition as long as the CAN network continues to exist. If the CAN network, if Portland in negotiations no longer can keep the CAN network, then we'd lose our access channel in Vancouver and Clark County. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. So before I give the next slide, please. One second. Should I just continue without the program?
Madam Chair, I propose that we pause for some questions. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Counselor Mevaji, we're having, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, we're having some technical difficulties. So I would say go ahead with your questions right now as we work through the technical part on our end.
Thank you. These subjects seem vastly different. And I'm really confused as to what we're doing here. Between the franchise agreement with Comcast for broadband cable and then the PEG fees, and I mean, they sound like two totally different subjects. And I'm really wondering, because the first part of this presentation, I just like, oh my gosh, this is an amorphous, never-ending process going on for three years. What's the point? Does every county in the country have these? Does every one take many, multiple years to accomplish them? Is it in a vacuum? What's happening with our efforts with Commerce, federal and state on our BEED grants? What's happening with Public Works on permitting fees for underground? With our PUC for getting cable placed on their poles? And the exorbitant costs that are involved? Where are all the other providers? Are these fair and fair to competition to all the other providers in the county? I just have so many questions on what we're doing here. But first and foremost, what I perceive is a never-ending process. Does it take every other county three-plus years to get one of these agreements in place? So I'm really confused by all of this.
Sure, it does take at least typically a three-year window. That's why back in 2020, we were notified from Comcast, you have a three-year franchise renewal window. And unfortunately, it's taken longer, so we had to extend it an additional year. But yes, there's very complex issues going on. For example, over in Portland right now, they've had to extend the past additional year, and they're still without a franchise. So it's a long, arduous process to go through. And part of it also, you want to build in that you can seek public input on what the cable needs are in the community. And that's part of that community ascertainment study, and it took quite a while to go through that process. We are only dealing with-
How does that relate to all the efforts we're doing with BEED? And those separate state Commerce, WSU extension? I mean, we've sunk a lot of work into that, and it sounds like these are parallel efforts. Is that true?
We can all, no, no, we are dealing with strictly a cable television service. We can't, under FCC guidelines, we can't do any negotiations when it comes to broadband telephone service, things like that. And if another cable provider was to come to our community and seek a cable franchise, they are more than welcome. The most recent one was CenturyLink, when they came in and competed against Comcast, and we provided them with a cable franchise. And we did provide, I did provide a briefing memo that outlines the different fees and the legal authority that we have. But we're following the Cable Act of 1992 as amended. And so these are pretty well laid out, the process, how we have to go through with the renewal process. We are what's considered in the informal renewal process. And it does take unfortunately a long time.
Thanks for all that. So I don't know if Jordan's on board, but I mean, this sounds like an anachronistic system. I mean, cables overcome by Starlink, overcome by broadband. I mean, it sounds like we're working on 1980s technology and agreements. And I don't know, it's all sounds overlapping, underlapping, and duplication of efforts. I'm not sure where we're heading. Anyway, thanks for that answer.
And Gary, Counselor Mevaji, I'm sorry. I would like to underscore something that you said about the other opportunities that are out there. I am asked regularly by various constituents, why is it that we're still with cable? Well, it's clear that this system is very well-developed. I mean, there's no question about that. However, there are still customers who are not reached, and particularly in the remote areas. And their question is always, why would satellite, as an example, not be better? Because building out the cable is too cumbersome in our geography. What's the take on that?
Well, the one thing, it's very expensive to build fiber plant, to expand fiber plant. And so Comcast, as any other cable company, is a private company. And they need to seek a return. For example, if they run a certain distance down the road, are there going to be enough homes to support the cost so they get a return on their investment for expanding their plant? And so that's part of the negotiations. What can they afford? We keep trying to reduce the number of homes required for them to expand their plant. And they have to, you know, they have to expand it from their existing plans. So for example, to go two miles to another community without anything along that two-mile path, it just doesn't, you know, figure in their return in investment.
Okay, understood. But how does that relate to the difficulty of laying cable in the more remote areas of our county, which still are not served, compared to something like a satellite connection?
Satellite is an offer for people, and they can obviously utilize satellite. The one thing people really want is the internet connectivity. And satellite does have, you know, there is Starlink satellite, but you know, fiber connection has a much stronger internet capability.
You say much stronger. Does that mean that satellite is too limited to use in education or other applications?
You know, I personally haven't studied the bandwidth that provided by satellite companies. But yes, I don't think, for example, they're providing anywhere close to a gig connectivity on a satellite over the, you know, satellite providers. But I could be wrong, but just that's my understanding.
Uh huh. Well, I don't have a clear-cut answer yet for our constituents on why cable is preferable when it's in the more remote areas that are truly hard to reach versus satellite. So I look for more information from you and others on that to give a more thorough response.
Okay.
If I could just ask a question, maybe this could help clarify. What we're looking at today, though, is just our franchise related to the public education governmental channels. Is that correct?
Related to cable television service from Comcast in our community. So part of the cable television service are the PEG channels, but it also provides cable programming to residences, so it's-
Right. Well, there's many other issues related to broadband and Starlink and all of that, but that's not what we're really looking at today. And hopefully, there'll be other opportunities for us to get some answers on the broader questions.
That's correct. We are just looking at this case.
That's exactly my point. I mean, these are two different presentations when you're talking about PEG, the educational channels, and then the broader issue of uplink, downlink, starlink, you know, broadband. I mean, this sounds like it's 30, it's an anachronistic process based on old technology that is solvable in other ways today. So, and we're spending a lot of energy with years of working on a single agreement. I mean, so we're spinning our wheels on something that seems to be overcome by modern technology. I don't understand the relationship of all these issues. That's the problem. I'm hoping our policy advisor can help enlighten us or someone else. Because I see this as two different presentations. The one we're starting now, which is the PEG and those fees and educational TV. And then the much broader discussion that we're putting a lot of effort into in the BEED, you know, and getting broadband, which provides streaming TV and other services. So anyway, I'm completely lost by this.
So Counselor Mevaji, if I can, and Counselor Marshall touched on this. This is just one piece. And as Jim mentioned, this is common with negotiations for a franchise agreement. And you are correct, there are other things that the county is working on, including the work with Wazoo that you have been intimately involved with, with Amber. So that's another path that's being worked on. And we have the ARPA grant that we're negotiating with Comcast regarding accessibility around the Battleground Lake area. So those are moving forward at the same time. But this is one specific area for a franchise agreement that council's been briefed on for the last three years. And so that's the focus. And our guest today from CBTV is just providing that update and wanting council's feedback on the current franchise agreement. I will make sure that they're updating, they may actually have more updates with the Wazoo one, but I'll make sure that staff brings forward the other pieces at a later council time.
So Kathleen, I appreciate that summary. But my starting point and ending point is something that takes multiple years on an old technology that's overcome by other things. What is the whole point of this, other than to continue an old bureaucracy? What is the point of the franchise agreement? What does it do for anybody?
It's to continue the service that is being provided today. If we don't have it, that's going to cut off service to residents.
Correct. Plus, in addition, it does bring revenue to Clark County. It brings services to, the cable services to residents. If we don't renew the cable franchise, then we, there's a risk we could, you know, we'd have to just further extend. It provides better protection for the county. If we have a franchise in replace where it covers us for all the public works provisions. So there's a number of benefits to getting a new cable franchise.
And we can certainly, you know, we want to make sure that they can continue so that we don't have a disruption of service to our residents, but that there's nothing that prohibits discussion on, is this the best technology moving forward? But right now, we're just trying to minimize that disruption.
Yeah, I think we're completely talking past each other. You know, if the government eliminated all this regulatory process, it doesn't tell Comcast they can't provide their service. Or if it does, that's a made-up regulatory bureaucracy. And that's why I'm questioning the beginning and ending of this process. I mean, I don't know why it's in place. I don't know how it impacts other cable providers, if it does at all. Are there other cable providers? You know what, I just, I think this is an anachronistic process that is just bureaucratic and it sees no end. It just continues on and on and on.
I appreciate that. You know, we are following, you know, federal guidelines on what local communities can do to negotiate a cable franchise. We've gone through this process, I've gone through this process myself two different times. It does take a long time. But then once the franchise is in place, we have a good, long window. We're hoping to get a 10-year cable franchise that we wouldn't have to go through this issue again for another seven years. And you're correct, there could be different technologies. But it's dependent on federal legislation and FCC rulings. And so we're kind of beholden to federal guidelines here.
Could we continue with the presentation?
Sure.
And I just want to add one more thing. We're doing this also in accordance with our Clark County Code, which we can always refer back to as well. So you are heard, Counselor Mevaji. And I will keep everybody informed as we move forward with this process, as well as the other ones.
So to give you a little bit of background before I get into the financials. In December of 22, Comcast reported 50,405 cable subscribers. And that's roughly split 54% within unincorporated Clark County and 46% within Vancouver. In 2022, Clark County received $2.1 million in cable franchise fees. And Vancouver received 1.9 million. Franchise fees are 5% of Comcast gross revenues on cable services. Now currently, we don't get any revenue on their broadband services or telephone services, just the cable services. And franchise fees are unrestricted funds that are currently deposited directly into the general funds of the City of Vancouver and Clark County. Comcast also collects the $1 per residential cable subscriber per month for the PEG capital funding. And this $1 fee, which was established in 1998, hasn't changed. It's been $1 the entire time. PEG fees pay for the capital equipment needed to produce programming by Clark Vancouver Television and TV etc. So for example, the cameras in this room, our video production booth, the playback system where we stream all the, where we have all the channels, that's all paid for by this PEG capital funding. Same thing with the school districts. They have studios in their different district offices. They have all the high schools. They show concerts, sporting events. All that equipment is paid, or the majority of equipment is paid through by these PEG funds. We also set aside approximately $26,000 per year by offsetting a portion of the cost of Comcast Business Services. This is the internet connectivity or broadband connectivity for local nonprofits. And Clark County, the City of Vancouver, and the library just kind of split that 226,000. The ascertainment study identified approximately a $10 million need in capital over the next 10 years for Clark Vancouver Television and TV etc. So we started off suggesting that the PEG fee be increased, again, hasn't been updated since 1998, from $1 to $1.38 to meet the need. However, we noted a sharp decline in the number of residential cable subscribers as people cut the cord. From 2020 to 2022, the PEG fee has lost approximately 15.46%. Going from 734,000 collected in 2020 to 618,000 collected in 222. And over the last year, I've noticed, I noted, and a continued acceleration of this loss. We compared that rate of decline with the franchise fee, which again is based off 5% of gross revenue. The franchise fee during that same two-year period actually increased 1.37% over the same period. So again, we're talking the PEG fee is $1 per cable- So again, we're talking, the PEG fee is $1 per cable subscriber. When you lose a cable subscriber, you're going to get a loss of money. But with the franchise fee, if, if cable rates are raised, that helps offset the loss. So, so next slide, please. Okay. So, so based off this, to better stabilize this fund, we are proposing moving the PEG fee from $1 a month to 1% of gross revenue. In 2022, we collected 618,000 in the $1 per month model. If we were to move this to the 1% of gross revenue, we would have collected $802,000. So what does this mean for the average cable, Comcast cable subscriber? For the limited basic subscriber, the fee would actually fall from $1 to $0.52 per month. For the popular TV subscriber, which is the average cable subscriber, the fee would increase by $0.3 per month. For the digital starter subscriber, the fee would increase by $0.23 per month. And obviously, the more cable, and this is only on cable services, it wouldn't include any broadband, but for example, if you had a lot of movie channels, the fee would go up a little bit more than that. Gross revenues, and then, so you can see the difference. We hope to, again, better stabilize that fund. Are there questions about that issue? Feedback?
I have a question and feedback. I'm wondering how, what percentage of the budget for the PEG services, does this cover at 100%? Or do you rely on other grants or other sources of income for those services?
Now, this is, this only is covering capital services, equipment. So obviously, operational funds, yes, the City of Vancouver and Clark County contribute operational funds for operating CVTV, but the vast majority of capital comes, capital funds come from this PEG fund. For TV, et cetera, it's slightly different. For example, when they build, when they build a new school, they'll put in levy funds to help put in some equipment, but they also supplement this with the PEG equipment. By far, the PEG equipment for capital needs for the school districts is the largest, I believe.
Great, thanks. And I like the direction of this going with the 1%, so it can tie with the growth of the revenue that comes in. So I think that's a good direction.
Thank you. Any other feedback on that issue? Okay, the next steps in the process, we're gathering feedback from the council today, from the city council on November 20th, and we held a similar presentation with the telecommunications commission on October 18th. We'll address any of the issues that arise in these discussions and continue with negotiations. We'll then seek a recommendation on a completed franchise with the telecommunications commission in March of 2024, and then we'll bring a finalized franchise for the council's consideration in April or May of 2024. And that's all I have. Any questions? Feedback?
Well, I'll just continue the general theme. My general concerns just still remain. I see these as two different subjects, and I, you know, I don't know if this is a Congress issue, but I just see this whole bureaucratic process as decades behind tech, current technology. We're not in the business of making money as a county off of these cable agreements. And I don't know how all of this fits with all of our efforts today to get high-speed internet that completely overwashes all these capabilities. So I'm at a complete loss. I see this as an absolute bureaucratic process that doesn't know how to kill itself. So I don't know if this is a discussion with our local congressional representatives. Anyway, I'm reading through your, again, through your, your report right now, but I'm not in favor of doing anything other than figuring out what the purpose of this is.
I would be concerned with disruption of services, though. I think it may be a process we don't like, but it's the process we got. I have a question related...
It has nothing to do with liking or disliking it. It's, you know, it's a, just because it's a place that takes years to keep and keep working on, I mean, I think we need to question, why, why is it in place? You know, what are we doing with this? I mean, I, that's the question. It's not that I like it or dislike it. I don't understand the purpose of it today. It may have been viable 20 years ago, 30 years ago. I'm sure Congress had some reason at some point to stop this.
I do concur with you, however, Counselor, that disruption of service would be a major concern with which we would need to deal first and foremost before making serious changes. Are there other bits of feedback?
Yeah, so this, I understand what Councilor Mevage is saying. I find this a bit confusing as well, but this is just for the renewal portion. I think Council Marshal mentioned that, too. This is, and also Kathleen, this is just making it so we're renewing what we have currently at this point so that services can continue. Correct, Kathleen?
That is correct.
Okay.
And in the memo that was provided, I just re-sent it to all the councilors. What is negotiated is set by statute or by law. So that is in the memo that I did forward, and I, like I said, I just forward it, re-forwarded to the council.
I do have just one, one additional question, if I could.
Go ahead.
Could you characterize some of the feedback that you received from subscribers? And if there's a mechanism within this negotiation to address any complaints or service levels?
Yes, yes. Feedback we received, again, try to get cable out in more rural areas. We're trying to do that with the density requirements. We got a lot of feedback about frustrations with customer service. And so the current cable franchise only has, refers to the FCC customer service standards. Our new franchise we're proposing has quite an expanded customer service section that deals with outage, outage rebates, cable stores, how they process claims, notices to customers. It's based a lot off the Clackamas County franchise, but it greatly expands that to address some of that needs. And then plus, we heard the needs of the TV, et cetera. They wanted two additional HD channels. We were able to, you know, to do that. So those are some of the different comments we got. You know, the one comment you get is, we want lower rates. Unfortunately, we can't negotiate the rates. And again, we're dictated on what we can and can't negotiate through federal statutes.
Thank you for that.
So if I could just focus on this, so number one, I don't want disruption of service to. It is what it is, as much as I question this entire process. So let's focus on the rates and what you just said. We don't control rates. We obviously don't want to see rates increase. And so focusing on this proposal to change the PEG capital fee from $1 a month, which seems pretty de minimis, to 1% of gross revenue, let's, let's talk about that. Do we see that? Because any fee that's going to cost Comcast more money is going to be passed on to their subscribers. I guarantee you that. So what, how do we measure gross revenue? Where do we get that from? And what will we see? What will a dollar a month for this capital fee look like if it's based on 1% of gross revenue? I mean, what are we doing to our customers?
So, so part of the, part of the cable franchise also spells out gross revenues. What's, what's covered? We've expanded that definition and tried to, again, cover as much gross revenue to collect as much as we can. The, for the basic cable subscriber, as I mentioned, currently it's a dollar per month. For the limited basic cable subscriber, it would actually decrease to $0.52 a month. For the, what's the average tier customer, what they call popular TV, it would increase by $0.3 per month. For the digital starter, which is a little higher tier customer, it would increase from $0.23 per month. There are also, right now, it's restricted to just residential cable subscribers. So what's called bulk accounts or apartment complexes, they aren't being charged this PEG fee. So that also kind of spreads out the fee. They receive the public access, the cable PEG programming, but they're not having to pay for any of the capital needs. This also kind of spreads out that, that need.
Where does that, where do those numbers come from? Whether it impacts it in a positive or a negative way, you know, increasing the cost, decreasing the cost, or have no impact? Does Comcast provide that? Do we, does our finance department parse through the data?
Sure. We get regular 5% gross revenues on franchise fees. And so we took that figure and then, you know, divided by five to get that percentage that we would bring in capital. And so we're already getting the 5%, just take 20% of that, and that's how we get through these totals. And the same thing, the calculations can be used then to figure out what it means hitting customers' bills.
One of the agenda items for today is next steps. And I'm thinking that if we do that today, we'll have more clarity on where we're headed when. Would this be a good time, Jim, to start to enumerate what those next steps are?
Sure. Sure. We're currently gathering feedback. We are going to then go back to negotiations, and we plan to get a recommendation from the county, from the telecommunications commission in March 2024 on a finalized cable franchise for the county. And once we get their recommendation, we'll then bring it to county council to consider in the spring, probably April or May of 2024.
And Council, do you have any questions or comments about that list of next steps? I think that's very helpful, Jim. Thank you.
My only thoughts are, yeah, that's great. My guidance would be, the county doesn't need to make more money on this. Our constituents need to have their costs as low as possible. This really is a debate nationally as to whether these kind of services are to be treated as utilities or not, and the inequity that, especially those that are impoverished that can't afford these services right now. I don't want to see fees go up. So in negotiations, yes, I want to be fair to Comcast for sure, but I don't want to raise fees for our constituents.
Thank you for that. Is there other feedback on next steps?
I guess, just to clarify, it looks like for some people, the fee will go down. For some, it will go up. We could get percentages of who, how many people it goes up for, how many people it goes down for. It appears to me that equity is built into this process, and I think that we don't want to make money on this, but we don't want to shortchange the services that we're providing to the community.
Thank you. And is there additional feedback on next steps? Kathleen, is there anything that you wish to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Jim, how about you? Anything you would wish to add?
No, thank you for your feedback. We'll go back and continue negotiations and bring this back to you next spring.
Thank you. And just to clarify once more, you are taking this to the city in, was it mid-November? What is that date again?
November 20th for a similar workshop.
So we may wish to listen in on that, to gain some commonality of thinking there as well. If there is nothing further, at this time, I think it's clear that we have a long ways to go for the understanding of the total project. But Jim, I'd like to thank you for your complete openness, it appears, in sharing the numbers with the public and with the council. It is very refreshing. Not only are you knowledgeable, but open. And that's a good combination that we need, particularly on this topic.
Thank you very much.
If there is nothing, you are very, very welcome, believe me. And if there is nothing else at this time, we would call an end to the work session, and we'll regroup as a council for council time at 1:00 p.m. today. Anything else for the good of the order, Kathleen?
No, thank you.
Okay. This part of the meeting is adjourned, and again, thank you, Jim. Bye-bye.